Ah, that is, uh, and the, eh, one, seven, be, got the, sir, those, uh, uh, several had done to, sir, all the way. Uh, uh, it's, uh, Chi, could you provide the roll call for us?
Hello, good morning, everyone. Roll call for Health Education and Human Services Committee, special meeting September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at ten AM.
Ten AM.
Daniel Iso.
I'm here.
Honorable Daniel Iso answered roll call. Honorable Carl R. Slater. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Can you hear me?
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Good morning, Halona's present.
Honorable Pernell Halona answered roll call. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Once again, Honorable Carl R. Slater.
Present, here.
Honorable Carl R. Slater answered roll call. Chair, you have four members present.
Chair So, we cannot-
Honorable-
Thank you.
Um, Honorable, uh, Pernell Halona, we have you provide the invocation to give guidance to, um, to us as members of the House Committee and to, uh, give guidance to how we address matters before us. Thank you.
Uh, Chair, you on?
Honorable Halona, could you provide the invocation?
Chair, uh, I was just checking to make sure I'm still on. My phone was going out there for a while. All right, thank you, Chair, and, uh, good morning, everybody, uh, uh, that's attending this, uh, Health Human Services, uh, uh, committee meeting, and, uh, uh, welcome to the meeting, and, uh, let's show you a quick prayer for us. And, uh, we all bow your own heads, and I know we all have your own ways to pray, so, uh, follow along with me, and we'll try to get this meeting started, so. Lord heavenly Father, we thank you for all these wonderful things that you have blessed us with, all the wonderful rain that you have provided us, all the wonderful growth that has come out for the animals out there to, to provide yourselves with food. We ask, Lord, that you continue to bless us and continue to feed the animals and give them water. We also ask, Lord, that you protect us. Health Education, Human Services Committee, that we may be able to make the right decisions, that we may be able to go forward and, and, and do the best for our people here across Navajo Nation. We also, Lord, like to thank our, our, uh, President, Vice President of the Navajo Nation, as well as the President and Vice President of, of the United States and all the people across the nation. And we, we want to thank them all, Lord, for all the wonderful things that you've done for the country and all the stuff that you are going to do, and give you spirit, give you a spirit, strength and wisdom to move forward for the people. Just like we are today with the committee, to give us the strength and wisdom to move forward and right, make the right decisions for us as we move along today. We also, Lord, like to, uh, thank all the veterans for their wonderful service that they have provided us and give us freedom in this country, and that we have provided the freedom every day because of their leadership and providing that for you. So we ask, Lord, that you bless them and give them peace and tranquility in their lives today and tomorrow and, and the day after. Lord, we thank you all for that. We also thank you all for all the wonderful foods you have blessed us with, with all the harvests that we're bound, uh, we're being blessed with, with all the corn, squash, potatoes, beans, and all the people have grown across the country here. We ask, Lord, that you, that it protects us and make, give us strength, Lord, so that we can continue to move through today, protect our, our families and help our people to move forward in their lives, Lord Jesus Christ. We ask these things in the name of Lord. We also, Lord, would like to bless our people across the seas who have gone through this loss of their loved one there. Green. Elizabeth the Second. We ask, Lord, that you protect them, give them solace, Lord, and that we want you to, uh, uh, move that country into the better days. As we know, they, they, they have long ways to go to. Lord, we want to ask that you bless all those people, as well as the people that are here on Navajo Nation who have caught the virus, the monkey virus that's going around, Lord, protect us. Jesus, protect us from the virus, protect us from COVID as well. I know you're, you're working on relieving this virus from us, but we need more protection, Lord Jesus Christ. We ask that you give us guidance and protection to make sure that we all stay safe all across Navajo Nation. We ask all these blessings from you, Lord Jesus Christ, in the name of Lord. Amen. Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Halona, for providing the words of prayer and use that for guidance, uh, wisdom and to acquire knowledge. Um, committee members, do you have any announcements? Committee members, any announcements? If not, then let's go to recognizing guests and visiting officials. Please introduce yourself, those that are on the call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Uh, thank you, good morning, Mr. Chair, this is Dr. Martha with the Department of DNA Education. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning, Honorable Chair So and members of HES. This is Loya Khanakni Henderson with OLC on the call today. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, committee members, this is Michelle Morris with Department of Health. I'm on the call.
God, Ishan, Tony, this is Derek Franklin from OPVP.
Good morning, committee, this is Anson Lewis with Division of Aging and Long Term.
Good morning, this is Dr. Jim with Department of Health.
Anybody else?
Uh, good morning, Shana, uh, this is, I'm Officer the Speaker on the line.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to Ms. Angelita Benali. Could you review the proposed agenda with the committee members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, good morning, everyone, and, um, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. You have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Special Meeting, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, ten AM. Resigning to Honorable Daniel Iso, Chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson. Places of via telecommunications, Winderock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. There's one for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Five, reports, A is a Navajo Department of Health regarding the Division of Aging and Long-Term Care Support, DALTICS, and a Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services. Of the third is the non-emergency transport. Presenters are Anson Lewis, Jr., Planner, Division of Aging and Long-Term Services with NDOH. Uh, Dr. Michelle Bensner, Health Services Administrator for Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services. Dr. Jim Jim, Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. The Department of DNA Education. One is the, uh, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three Conditions of Appropriation Administrative Contracting. The second issue is the joint meeting with the Navajo Board of Education as requested during the uh, twenty twenty-three budget hearings. Third, fourth, third is the, uh, recertification of contract and grant schools on the Navajo Nation. Fourth are administrative certification verifications at contract and grant schools. Presenters are Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent of Department of DNA Education, also with Dr. Colin Mopit, Assistant Superintendent with the Department of DNA Education. Six, new business men, seven, old business men, eight, close meeting announcements and adjournment. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Uh, committee members, uh, the wall is on your side of the net right now. How do you wish to proceed?
Motion, Chair?
Motion, uh, uh, second, okay. Thank you. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, I'll recognize the motion to adopt the agenda. Um, as read into the record, and I'll recognize the second by Honorable, uh, Paul Begay. Committee, any, uh, comments, um, additions to this agenda? Okay, um, Ms. Chi, could you provide us the roll call?
Roll call vote for review and adopt the agenda. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote? Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote? Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl R. Slater votes green. Chair, you have two in favor, zero opposed. Agree, including yourself, that way.
Ms. Chi, do we have, still have Honorable Halona on the call?
Chair, I don't see him on line.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I, I think, uh, Delegate Halona's call has dropped.
Maybe he just left the house and he's in no cell coverage.
Right. I'll text him.
So we don't have quorum. There's just three of us on the call. Oh, um, Ms. Angelita Benali, um, please review with the committee the rule on, uh, receiving reports. Do we need a quorum to receive the report?
Mr. Chair and, um,
Yeah.
members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, the committee can move on to, uh, initiating the receipt, the receipt of reports, and then when a quorum, um, is established, uh, but you will need a quorum, you know, for the vote, of course. And when the quorum is reestablished, uh, we can announce that.
Okay. Can somebody reach out to the rest of the committee members by text to get on the call? I realize also, uh, Honorable Vice Chair Slater will have to, um, drop off the call as, uh, I think BNF is convening to hear a report from, uh, Oni Development Corporation. And Honorable Vice Chair is a shareholder. Are you on both calls, Satilla? Chair Slater?
I'm not on both calls, I was planning on just doing Hessman, if they needed me over there, I'd, I'd go over, but I thought by requesting the report, um, before budget and finance, I was satisfying my duties to, to get them in front of the committee. But, uh, I can call in in a moment after we move on with our agenda. And I wish, I'm a shareholder representative. The nation is the sole shareholder. Represent the people.
Okay, and and Vice Chair Slater, you are the representative for HES on in that particular, um, corporation. Am I correct?
Chair, I think I'm the designee of the speaker. I could be wrong.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's one of those where, you know, there's a representative from each committee. I think there is one from the president, one from the speaker.
Mr. Chair, uh, Delegate Halona, uh, indicated he's on the line right now, and we do see his call listed. Thank you.
Okay. For, uh, quorum purposes, let's do roll call again. And then once we have uh, four, then we'll go to the vote to adopt the agenda. Ms. Chi?
Chair, roll call vote for Health Education and Human Services Committee Special Meeting. Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. answered roll call. Honorable Pernell Halona? Honorable Carl R. Slater?
Present, thank you.
Honorable Carl R. Slater answered roll call. Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Daniel Iso?
I'm here.
Honorable Daniel Iso answered roll call. Honorable Edison J. Winika? Honorable Pernell Halona? Once again, Honorable Pernell Halona? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Edison J. Winika? Chair, you have three members present.
Mr. Chair, um, Delegate Halona is on the call, however, we cannot establish audio contact with him, from him.
Oh.
And also, um, I, I do, oh, and I do see, um, Delegate Charlene So on the call as well. Thank you.
R. Six.
Good morning, I apologize, I have been trying to contact you.
Oh, yeah, Ishan, Pizza. So, with, uh, Honorable Charlene So being on the calls and, um, answering, that gives us four members present. Uh, so, Ms. uh, Chi, could you do a roll call to adopt the agenda? Um, for today's meeting?
Okay, Chair. Honorable Charlene So answered roll call, Chair. Um, continuing on, roll call vote for review and adopt the agenda for today, Health Education and Human Services Committee Special Meeting. Motion by Honorable Carl R. Slater, second by Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Carl R. Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green, and he is present here in the Budget and Finance Conference Room. Chair, you have five in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi, let's record show five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. We've adopted the agenda as written to the record. Now let's proceed to item four. Um, reviewing and adopting the uh, journal. Ms. Angelita Benali and Ms. Chi.
Mr. Chair, I'll defer to, um, Ms. Chi, she, um, structured the journals and I believe did send them out. Thank you.
Ms. Chi?
Chair, roll call vote for review and adopt the journal for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two?
Ms. Chi, what, when did you, for the record, when did you email the journal for August seventeenth?
Chair, um, unfortunately, I didn't send out the journal, I apologize. Chair.
Mr. Chair, uh, I, I can, uh, we, the committee can come back to that if they wish, or we can add it to tomorrow's agenda. Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, um, committee members, based on the fact that it was part of the agenda that was adopted, uh, the chair is open to a motion to defer this journal to, uh, to tomorrow, um, September twenty-one, regular HES meeting.
I'll motion to defer the journal for the seventeenth to the twenty-first.
Thank you. I think that's okay, I'll, I'll recognize the motion by Honorable Vice Chair Slater. And who was the one that was seconding? Was that Honorable Winika? Yes. There was a lot of static, uh, was it Halona or, uh, Winika?
Delegate Winika.
Okay, God, it's, it's, thank you for being part of the quorum. Um, with that, committee, uh, Ms. Chi, uh, roll call vote, please, on deferring the journal until tomorrow.
Okay, Chair. Roll call vote for deferring journal, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, to tomorrow, Health Education and Human Services Committee Regular Meeting, September twenty-first. Uh, Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl R. votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Wino, Winika votes green. Chair, you have five in favor, zero opposed, and Chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi. So let's go to item five, A, uh, a report from, uh, Department of Health, respective, uh, Daltechs. Uh, Dr. Jill Chin, are you on the call?
Um, yes, Chair, and I also have my staff on the call that can report for each item. So, we do have Mister Lewis and Doctor Branser as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to Mister Enslin Lewis. You have the teleconference floor.
Good morning, uh, committee, the delegates. Um, I guess I reported for Division of Aging. Um, I can go over some financial stuff right now. Um, our Arizona DES Title III is in full effect for funding year FY twenty-three, which is from July first to June thirtieth. Um, we did have a few businesses that did expire, but, um, we still have the regular funding as well. Currently, I am waiting for our New Mexico House Bill Two to be finalized by the state. Um, President Nas did sign it last week, and I did forward it back to the state for their signatures. Once I receive that back, um, I will forward it to O M B to establish business units. That will fund the Shiprock, Crown Point, and Fort Defiance Agencies, as well as, um, our administration personnel staff. Um, as I was aware of this week, I appreciate that you got our, um, Title VI Tribal Resolution, um, introduced, is currently on the five-day waiting, waiting, um, public comment, waiting. So, I appreciate that as well. Um, as of today, though, um, ACL has not released the, the application that will be submitted for the FY twenty-three to twenty-six. So, once I receive that, I will send it through the executive review. Um, updates, we did, we did interview for a health service administrator as of last week. So, that's in the process at the moment. Um, we also submitted, um, PSQs for, um, the program supervisor twos at the agency level. That's going to be reviewed and approved hopefully soon. Also, um, I do have the agencies try to update their vacancy list so they can submit it for advertisement through DPM's website. I did give a deadline of September thirtieth to have all that in place. Also, um, currently now, uh, at the administration level, we only have two personnel, me and my, uh, senior office specialists. So, we're basically running the program from here. And then, um, I am slowly gathering information from the senior centers in regards to, um, their needs, such as HVAC, um, repair or upgrade, maintenance, fire suppression, inspect, inspection or upgrade, any roof repair, fire safety inspection or upgrade, kitchen appliance, and possibly new vehicle. We do have some defunded CARE Act money that, um, that's going to help, uh, provide the funding for these, uh, the needs, I guess you would say, for the senior center at the moment. And, uh, again, um, I'm pretty sure this is the same, but for, um, New Mexico capital outlay, um, we're still having some holdup at the CPMD level. Um, we do have like five to seven, um, picks that do expire on June thirtieth this coming year. So, I would like to have those in place soon, hopefully. And, um, at the moment, that's our main, our current, our, our, basically, our updates and general information at this point. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mister Lewis. Uh, committee members. Any questions?
Here, this is Delegate Slater.
All right. Go ahead, Tilla. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I guess three things. Starting with my, uh, broken record player speech. We still need a driver in Rock Point that's impacting services, and we really need the position to be re-advertized. I don't see it currently on the DPM website. So, I would like to strongly recommend that that be done. Um, it's been several years now, and we really need this. Second, um, I'd like to know what the status of breakfast services are across the nation, and then, I guess specifically within Chinley Agency, and how that's being handled. If there's any direction or recommendations that's been provided to the programs. Uh, I hear, you know, there's definitely an appetite for it, and, uh, our seniors as well as our staff would like to provide that service. And then, third, in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, there was a, shoot, I can't remember if it was a legislative concern or a condition appropriation that the committee passed, and then the council passed. And it requests the study of creating some sort of funds that could be drawn down in between, um, funding periods. So, say, you know, the grant hasn't come in, or ACL has not, um, issued it, or there's a slowdown in processing on the Navajo Nation side, then that fund could be used and then reimbursed from the funding. So, I just want to remind the program that we asked for the program and the Controller's Office and O M B to study that. And I think it's something that needs to be reported by the end of the second quarter. So, I wholly hope that we'll get some strong recommendations, and it's something that is slightly relevant to some of the facts that you reported in, uh, funding not being note, or the, the notice of funding not being, uh, really, so, those are three items. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Hey, try again. Just connected my phone, and we're using the central microphone right now. I'm in the B and F conference room with Ms. Chi, and then, um, Honorable Wanika's will be joining us shortly. Um, committee members, any other questions before we give, uh, Mister Lewis, uh, chance to respond? Okay, uh, Mister Lewis. You have the teleconference floor to respond to Honorable Vice Chair Slater's questions and concerns?
Thank you, uh, Chair So. Um, Vice Chair Slater, as for your question number one, um, I will look into that. I should have it, I, um, I will request a JVA by the end of the day and forward it to DPM. Um, as for question number, concerns number two, as of the breakfast, I, we, um, of course, currently, we're not serving breakfast. Um, my recommendation, and I think according to our contract, we do need a certified dietitian to establish a menu, a set menu. So, once we get that, um, I guess basically we can contract a dietitian, um, to create a menu for us. Um, we can start exploring the options of serving breakfast at the time. And then, um, we, um, Daltechs is aware of your, is it a legislative concern? Or, uh, yeah, for that, um, the funding period, that kind of in a gray area between July and, uh, September. Um, we will explore options for those. Um, like, like I said, in, in theory, our contract should be in place by July first. So, there shouldn't be no lapse. But, of course, um, again, my broken record is the fact that our internal system, the one sixty-four, takes up two to three months on those. So, I guess I see your concern on, on that. But, we will explore options on that gray area of funding for Daltechs. Thank you, sir.
Committee members, uh, any follow-up questions?
Delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, uh, Honorable Paul Begay, Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I have those on, on the air today. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I do also have, uh, concerns on these openings of these vacancies in, uh, physicians. Uh, it seems like it's, uh, kind of just dragging on and on, and, uh, it's never being filled. And, uh, we are now in a situation where even at the agency office in, in Tidbit City, we, we have a lot of vacancies, and people are now being called in from the centers, from out, from the senior, senior, uh, centers, to fill in these spaces temporarily, just so that the agency physicians can continue to operate. Uh, that's, that's getting pretty bad if you're trying to now pull people out, out, out of the centers to do the agency work. Uh, that's the concern. And I don't know how the process of advertising to fill these vacancies are, are, but, uh, we, we really need to push, uh, to fill these vacancies. Oh, 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 she's, uh, agency office, the record, and when they, I thought that they're, they're gone. Some of these physicians, uh, need to be filled in order for the agency centers to operate. Eh, kid, that is, eh, don't let her. But eh, yeah, these centers, oh, darnish, gee, I did, nah. They had, they had close, eh, in the agency office, and, and darnish. Just, just, uh, oh, 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 nah, she give, eh, nah, she got, oh, let eh, yeah, the me, yeah. Oh, oh, eh, so the year, oh, nah, oh, eh, I let eh, go, though. Especially, uh, the, uh, agency office, eh, 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 but eh, eh, kid, eh, eh, she, eh, that's, eh, close. Uh, oh, nah, eh, eh. Nah, I'd, eh, eh, gee, eh, gee, gee, eh, that's all, eh, 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 eh. And I know that, uh, these workers from the centers don't want to be pulled off their centers, but that's the case. Those are cases going on right now. Those are cases going on right now. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you. Um, committee members, anybody else? Okay. There being none from the other committee members, the chair also would like to. Oh, Cecilia, go ahead, Honorable Edison Wanika.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and mem- members of, of the committee. Uh, I have the same concern, uh, Honorable Delegate Paul Begay has. Um, I don't know, uh, if we need to call a special meeting or whatever to address, uh, some of the specific concerns that we have. And that will include, uh, 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 centers that are in our area. Because it always bothers me to talk about, um, that the Saint Michael's, uh, um, Senior Citizen Center, in a meeting like this, uh, we're talking about the overall Navajo Nation, but there's certain centers that we thought were temporarily closed, but they've been closed for more than, uh, four, five, or six months. And there's, um, very limited, uh, needs of those centers to be reopened. Why are they just lingering on? That's my concern, and I wish we could, uh, address it more directly. I guess this is the time, but, uh, uh, with my concern, e- even though it's the same as, uh, Delegate Begay's, mine is more specific to, uh, uh, Saint Michael's. And usually I go to the respective, uh, departments to address this. And I did. I was told that, um, the manager, the manager's position was abolished. And then it won't reopen until they hire a cook. So things like that, and it just makes you wonder why is it taking so long for them to hire? Maybe we need to get personnel involved too. So that's just a real concern, uh, Chair and members of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Wanika. Um, Mr. Lewis. I guess the, the main aspect is we have eighty-seven senior centers across the Navajo Nation. And the, the part that, uh, we're concerned about is services to the elderly population within those, um, service, uh, areas. And, uh, during the budget deliberations and even when we were addressing the ARPA funds, uh, there was, uh, delegates, uh, concerned about the HVAC, health ventilation and, and air con- air conditioning, and then the handicapable accessibility. Um, so those are some things that, uh, I guess, um, from the chair's, uh, position, um, a more comprehensive, um, report, if we could, uh, uh, get that and, and then to reinforce, um, the three committee members', uh, concern about the vacancies. Um, Ms. Angelica Benali, could we then, uh, convene a special meeting with, uh, Department of Personnel Management, Human Resources, and General Services? Um, the main aspect is the senior centers are more than likely part of the capital asset. Capital asset listing and insurance, uh, coverage is paid through, uh, risk management. And as such, uh, those repairs could be covered by insurance services. And so that's where we, we can look at. And again, um, Honorable Wanika, if you want to bring up specific, go ahead, because Honorable, um, Carl Slater already highlighted, um, Rock Point. In that way, it's part of this particular report record so that we can, uh, focus in on that. I know in my area, usually the senior centers, uh, don't have, um, during the chapter meetings, they don't really say, I need this, I need that, but, um, within the last ten days, two senior centers have, uh, expressed the need for, uh, supplies and, uh, repair of ramps and, uh, servicing of the HVAC as well as the servicing of the, um, stoves, whether it be the cleaning of the grease traps or just, uh, the, uh, ability to have, um, pilot lights being relit or being lit. So those are some things that we really, I realize that, you know, through, um, the Local Governance Act and with what Department of Justice, uh, recommended, they've drafted IGAs and MOUs uh, with each of the chapters where the chapters commit to, um, miscellaneous costs and, um, the provision of, uh, repair and maintenance. And so with these eighty-seven centers, could you, uh, uh, provide a listing of the chapters that have adopted those IGAs? And how many chapters we still need to basically, um, have them provide the, um, the IGAs? With that, committee members, uh, I'm gonna give the floor to Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. So, um, as to follow up with, uh, Mr. Honorable Begay's concerns, yes, uh, the, um, some staff from the, um, senior centers are being pulled to look over the agency as we try to fulfill these positions, the program supervisor two positions. As currently reported that they are going through a new PCQ process and will be hopefully reviewed and approved by DPM, so we'll be able to post them soon as possible. Um, just to clear some information up, these are voluntary bases. We're not forcing them. We kindly ask them if they want to take the position and the role, and they kindly accept. Um, as for Honorable Wanika for Saint Michael, I, you did come and meet with me in regards to that. As said earlier, um, we do need a cook for the senior center there. Um, and I believe a driver is positioned there, but is currently on leave, extended leave at the, at this point. Um, he has not provided any new information if he is gonna be returning to his position, but he currently does occupy that position. And, um, as for the vacancies, you know, I mean, I think it's just Navajo Nationwide, of course, um, and I don't know, I, I, I can't speak for the people that do apply or don't apply, but you know, I said, I mean, it's there on the website, they're posted, um, we have changed, um, closing dates to open till fill, um. Um, there's also a background investigation that is needed and some of these applicants don't pass the background. So, you know, that can be, I mean, that's something I don't want to eliminate because it's dealing with our elders. So that would, I would, I mean, I would highly recommend to keep that there as well. And I, I believe it's part of our contracts with the state and our funding sources. And, um, to correct delegate, um, so, I'm sorry, but it's, uh, we have eighty senior centers that operable throughout the Navajo Nation. And, um, I will provide a temp, the template that was provided for D, from DOJ, um, the agreements that, um, they had provided. So, um, so you guys can look at it and see what's part of the agreement as well. So you guys are aware of what, you know, like you said, what's gonna be agreed upon between the chapter and, uh, senior centers. Thank you.
Committee members, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, committee members, do you have any questions? Further comments?
Chair Flora.
Oh, it's not us, Honorable Purnell Halona, you have the floor.
Oh, uh, thank you, uh, Chair, so thank you. And, uh, Mr. Lewis, I, uh, this Delegate Purnell Halona, I just had a question on, uh, uh, the Senior Citizen Center out at Coyote Canyon. You know, we've been remodeling that thing, uh, shoot, been three years now since it's been worked on to remodel that building. And now the remodeling and everything is done, but we're just waiting on stove, refrigerator, uh, uh, utensils, uh, uh, stuff for kitchen to cook stuff with. That, uh, whose responsibility is that to get that all, uh, purchased for the Senior Citizen Center there? Is that, uh, uh, the department, Daltechs, or is that gonna have to be the, um, uh, the chapter that's gonna have to buy all that? Um, you know, they've been working on trying to get, uh, I guess, bids, prices together to get equipment for that senior center since it's not ready to go. We just need to get it equipped. Uh, can you tell me anything about that, what you know about that as far as the equipment? Mr. Lewis, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Um, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, uh, Delegate Halona, um, I believe when I talked to Mr. Everett Joel, he's the chapter, I don't know, I'm sorry, the senior center supervisor over Coyote Canyon, he did mention that we do need a phone line in place first. Um, I believe, um, I have contacted CPMD as well as NNTU. The paperwork is in the process as we speak, um. We did submit a referral so we can try to get a phone line in place. Once that, once that is in place, um, of course, um, we, we still need to get a approval from OEH after the inspection for a sanitation permit as well as a working permit. Um, in regards to kitchen equipment, um, I believe once the senior center was closed for remodeling, it was stored at one point, but I was told that, you know, in throughout the years, they were, it's, um, I wouldn't say, I'll just say they're missing. Um, but, um, in the long run, I guess basically we can say Daltechs would, could be responsible for the equipment, but you know, as, um, I would like to request for some assistance as well from the chapter, you know, as we can meet maybe in the middle, establish a working relationship with the chapter. And, um, but we do, I do have a meeting with, uh, chapter staff on Thursday morning regarding this issue. Um, we're gonna, I don't, I believe you were part of the email chain at the point, at some point. But I believe that Ms. Yazi has, um, set a date for two, uh, Thursday morning at eight o'clock at the chapter in regards to this. Thank you.
Okay, Chair.
Honorable Halona. Follow up.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And Mr. Lewis, I just, uh, you know, the reason why I was asking is because the chapter officials, yes, they're trying to help, but they're getting blocked here and there because, uh, uh, you know, you need to get three, three quotes. And I'm afraid they're gonna be getting in trouble because they're just going to, uh, one location like Walmart to pick up the television for the, uh, uh, for the, for the, uh, Senior Citizen Center Lounge. And I just don't want to make sure we don't get in trouble with that. If they're just only gonna do it one sole source, we need to figure out how we're gonna make sure we don't get in trouble with the other stuff that we're trying to purchase as well. And, uh, uh, and I didn't know, um, uh, they're supposed to have three quotes, I imagine. I don't know that they're, they're doing all of that right now. The, the way I understand it, they were just working with one source. So I guess we'll work it out on the meeting then Thursday, we'll see what, uh, kinda helps, if they're gonna be meeting there. But I think, uh, uh, some of that needs to be taken care of by Daltechs. Uh, thank you, Chair. Lewis.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Committee members, any other questions? Let, let me provide some guidance.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, Cecilia. Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
The question that I have is, wh- what happened to the breakfast meals that were already uh, stamped by a dietitian and were previously with the program? Could those be reused for breakfast? Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Mr. Lewis, and, and, and let me, committee members, let me give some guidance, you know? It's the chapters that sought the senior centers. And bids were taken to con- plan and construct and equip the senior centers with, uh, double oven, gas stove, refrigerator, freezer, and all the dining equipment. And at some, and, and they were listed on chapter assets. And then some of the folks, uh, chapter organizations, you know, they feel like and Daltechs provides the funding for the personnel, the food and supplies, and the senior center van. And that's how I s- I have seen the program operate throughout the years. Now the chapters are saying buy us a refrigerator, buy us this, buy us that. And that's, that's why I'm emphasizing this, um, intergovernmental agreement. So that's where, uh, I guess, um, the responsibilities for what the chapter has in hand and then what Daltechs provides is something that, uh, we really have to provide guidance to on as well as to clarify that relationship. But it even applies to the Head Start program in the same manner. So, uh, with that, committee members, um, Mr. Lewis, back to you.
Thank you, Chair. So, um, Vice Chair Slater, as into your question, um, I can honestly say that I started in the middle of COVID. And at the time, the, um, the senior centers were not serving breakfast. They were just doing lunch, uh, mostly home delivery at the time. And as of, as of today, we still have, we're still not serving breakfast, but, um, I will look around, I will look, um, for that menu, um, to see what's in place, see what's part of it. And, um, basically, once I find it, I will look over it and provide you an update on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, um. So as of Monday, those senior centers that are staffed to operate, are they allowed to uh, bring in the senior centers, seniors, uh, elderly into the centers? Uh, when was the start date for the, uh, the face-to-face day-to-day operations for the senior center? I know before that they were doing home deliveries only. Mr. Lewis.
Uh, yes, Chair, so, um, currently we should be at seventy-five percent of, um, in-person services and Daltech services. Um, I believe this went to an effect as of April in the mid, in the latter part of April twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry. Um, but let me find you, okay, exact date. But it wasn't, I'm sorry, it was the latter part of April. I would need to find that date for you, sir. But we, at least we should be up to seventy-five percent in-person services.
Is it April or August?
April.
Hmm, okay. Because to my understanding, some of the uh, senior centers were still doing home deliveries up to about, um, September sixteen? And, uh, and see, that, that's, I guess, what the committee is concerned about. The clarif- clarity of the report. The clarity of how information or memos or operational directives are sent out to the senior centers. That's, that's what we're seeing, um, a weakness in. Mr. Lewis, and that's where this, uh, the committee is expressing these aspects about the vacancies, about the services. And so now it seems like we're having to, um, call in other people to help get answers. Personnel management, human resources, and then for the equipment, uh, having to get the IGA, MOU, and, um, to bring in general services. That's where we, um, we see a weakness and we hope that you, uh, really shoulder that responsibility. Because, you know, in, in, in the long run, we go back to our chapters and we hear these. We, we try to address it as best we can, but those program responsibilities, then that all we can do is point to Daltechs. And, and that's the reason that, uh, Deltex is on the agenda for the report and that's where we're at. Committee members. Any further comment?
Uh, Chair So, um, exact date is April seventh, twenty, twenty twenty-two is when, uh, senior centers were were gonna be up to seventy percent maximum capacity or what they could handle at the time. But the max was seventy-five percent.
And I, I guess for me, you know, how does, uh, how is that implemented? Let's say we have what is a good number? Forty? Or even, let's go twenty. Twenty-five is the daily count. And you're saying they could only allow eighteen seniors into the center and turn away seven? It, that's, uh, for me, that's, you know, one of those it's, it's unreasonable.
Delegate, oh, it's not turning elders away, it's the fact that it's seventy-five percent occupancy. Say you have the eighteen in the senior center eating and one, one, say a couple leaves, then another couple can come in. It's just seventy-five percent occupancy, it's not seventy-five percent service. It's just the occupancy that we have for the senior centers. I mean, we're still serving them, we're still providing the services. It's just the fact that only seventy-five percent capacity can be in the senior center. We're not turning nobody away.
I hope you've clarified it to all the senior centers to operate in that manner.
Chair So, this is Dr. Jim. Um, we certainly can follow up with senior centers to make sure that we're looking at building occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. I guess, uh, but, uh, when you make that clarification, could you, uh, provide copies to, uh, the Hess Committee members and even to the, all the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council? As we do get those types of questions from our colleagues also.
Um, yes, sure now.
Oh, yeah, Deja, Deja. Thank you, um, we hate to call you in even though you were still on leave. So I, I figure you're teleconferencing. But A-Look Committee members, uh, Chair is open to, uh, one, uh, accept the report and to request documents as well and then to abide by Honorable, um, um, Edison Wanika's request for a special meeting with Personnel Management, Human Services, and General Services? Chair is open to, for a motion?
A motion Chair.
Oh, Cecilia, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, uh, will accept the motion.
Second Delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, Ch- Chair, Honorable Paul Begay seconds the motion. Thank you. Um, any additional comments? Not, then let's proceed. Let the record show that Honorable Edison Wanika is sitting with, uh, with the Chair and with Legislative Recorder, Ms. Chi, in the B and F conference room. Um, with that, Ms. Chi, um, roll call vote to accept the report.
Chair, roll call vote for accepting the report, Navajo Department of Health. Honorable Paul Begay Junior, how do you vote?
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carr R. Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carr R. Slater votes green. Honorable Charlan So, how do you vote? Honorable Edison J. Wanika, how do you vote? Honorable Edison J. Wanika votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Charlan So, how do you vote? Chair, you have three in favor, zero oppose.
Halona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Chair, that makes four in favor, zero opposed, and chair not voting.
Thank you, Chief. With that, we'll move on to, um, the Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services. Uh, Dr. Branser?
Anyone else, Ben Iman?
Yes, uh, hello, Yat A. Um, let me turn this other meeting down. Uh, this is Michelle, Dr. Branser. She ain't not as in this land, to always be as she bushes tea. Uh, Kia Anita Chanelian, totally Chinese Che. Uh, just coming before you all, the Hess Committee, uh, Chair, Vice Chair members, uh, with some updates that were requested. So the first one is regarding our third-party reimbursements, uh, with New Mexico and Arizona. And we have, um, you know, been diligently working on our current billing that we have, uh, being set up with New Mexico Medicaid. So we are currently billing for our behavioral health treatment services at, uh, all, well, the facilities mainly in New Mexico that have New Mexico Medicaid, uh, clients. And then also, we are still working on looking at, with Arizona, the access rostering within there, they call it an APEP system. And so the providers need to be approved after they're entered in. So we're almost completed that process. So once all of our providers with Arizona Access are approved, inputted, and, um, everything is okay on the access side, APEP side, we will begin, uh, billing for our behavioral health treatment services there. So, um, since majority of our treatment centers are in Arizona, um, again, we're just making sure everything is set up within our electronic health records, uh, with the processes of oversight, uh, working hard to make sure, you know, we are, uh, you know, can have these processes all set up and streamlined. And the next update, uh, I wanted to give you all was about our ARPA projects. In particular, the transitional housing and detoxification centers. And so with that, we have, um, in speaking with CPMD, you know, the Capital Projects Management Department, and, uh, because these are construction-related projects, uh, we just really needed their input, uh, right away. And so, um, DBMHS does have a planner. Uh, his name is Mike Salabi, so they've kinda recommended him to go ahead and start this process. And so the design builds we're looking at is for three modular, due to the fact the construction on site, I guess, is, it would be very costly. So looking at those three design modular buildings for transitional housing facility and the locations, um, are within our same areas as our treatment centers. So that would be Crown Point, New Mexico, Chinley, Arizona, and Fort Defiance, Arizona. And so currently, um, Crown Point also had been waiting a new outpatient facility. So, you know, we'll be combining, I guess, some of this together. And then with the detox or dedux- detoxification centers or services, um, really looking at how to maximize that with our residential treatment centers. And again, looking at the facilities we have or will hope soon have. So the Navajo Regional Behavioral Health Center in Shiprock, New Mexico, is our, um, residential facility within DBMHS, so working with, uh, I've begun talking with the Northern Navajo Medical Center, uh, due to the fact is it's our really personnel, um, that's needed to also run, um, like a detoxification level three point two, or do we need to look to go lower? So really in those conversations right now, um, because that building is existing and it's getting a lot of repairs and maintenance. And so we're gonna be looking at the detox there as well. And then the other one would be detox at a new facility we're proposing for residential treatment services and would most likely be, I guess, a modular bill, but I think it would be best to do it, you know, a ground-up build. But again, we'd have to look at all of the costs for that. Uh, but that new, uh, residential facility that can have detox services would be in Tuba City, Arizona. And so that's what we're currently working with. And, uh, just, you know, little by little, making sure we continue to move forward with our process, uh, since we do not do construction and we need to work with CPMD and all the other processes there. And lastly, the one, uh, regarding the transportation for what we call community self-help groups or self-help groups. You might heard of like AA, NA, Gambling Anonymous. Um, so I do attend the access, um, tribal consultations. And the one previously in August, and some of this was also probably happening during the summer, there was a, um, change. Uh, and again, this, the state of Arizona, you know, puts forth the, um, I guess, changes that the federal CMS or Centers for Medicaid and Medicare are, uh, wanting to, you know, make, uh, that. I guess, certain things happen and that change it and something to something else. And so that did impact our, um, I guess, ability to have access or Arizona Medicaid cover, um, transportation for these self-help groups. However, for DBMHS, you know, really didn't have, uh, an impact for our clientele, not necessarily because we don't, you know, we're not a EMT service, so we don't provide transportation in that manner. Um, but, you know, we have been made aware that that is, um, what happened during that timeframe. And so that is the end of my update reports. If there's any questions or clarifications needed, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Branser. Meeting members, do you have any questions? Dr. Uh, Jim did, uh, include Dr. Branser's, uh, report on the, um, access. Um, committee members? Okay, uh, Dr. Branser, the Crown Point facility, are, are we fully staffed with counselors at this point in time?
Thank you Chair So for the question. Uh, so for the Crown Point facility, uh, no, we are not staffed. Um, I would say all of our facilities across the board, we have ten outpatient facilities and the one residential in Shiprock, um, are really, um, needing to fill, uh, vacancies. And so, uh, that is one area that I have been working with the DPM on and proposing a, uh, salary increase due to their premium scale for our licensed clinicians. And so, uh, I've not yet heard back from DPM, that memo with the positions, with the, you know, ability of where we would, you know, find the difference of what the current pay scale is to what the premium scale pay, pay scale would be, um, to DPM. So, uh, hopefully we hear back soon. That's been about, hmm, perhaps maybe a month now, I can't remember. Uh, so anyway, that's how we are kinda looking at our, uh, one strategy to help with our personnel. Uh, but we do have, uh, two counselors there currently, Mr. Bill Morgan and Ms. Jennifer. And then we have, uh, two case managers or, and one that helps with, uh, family counseling right there. So, and one tra- one traditional practitioner. So, but we do need a clinical director at that site. And we also, um, would need some more counselors as well. So once we look to, uh, as we hopefully side by side with these new builds or modular design buildings, you know, that's what I'm really trying to do is strategize and how to bring our, help others come back home like myself, others to know that, you know, are licensed or can be licensed. And then really working, like I said, with DPM on how we can, um, review, you know, uh, applications, if you will, because there may be some candidates that we do receive that may be deemed, um, not qualified for whatever reason, but they may just not have, um, uh, you know, like, I'm thinking of a certain position that we need for our residential treatment center and that is a residential guidance tech. That is a position that really requires a high school, um, diploma with some experience in a kinda residential setting. But it really just depends on how you read somebody's application and resume. Um, you know, we had a lot of applicants for that, but there was none that, I guess, met qualifications. So those, that's just an example of how, you know, I'm striving to meet with DPM, um, and the managers there and recruitment and whatnot to really see how, um, we just need to work together to let us them, help them in a certain degree. And so that is really, um, just a full answer to what you asked about, um, the staffing at Crown Point. But yes, we do need counselors.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Dr. Branser. Um, the residential at, uh, Shiprock, is that twenty-four hour seven, twenty-four seven operation?
Uh, thanks for the question, Honorable. So yes, it is a residential in that, uh, American Society of Addiction Medicine criteria. When you get to the level three, which is residential, it is, you know, that twenty-four seven care, uh, depending on the levels of treatment services that are provided. So for Shiprock, um, an adolescent unit, we are working to open up, uh, a smaller part of the wings. It's, it's a larger facility, of course. But due to staffing issues, as was mentioned earlier, and just the building itself that's still going through maintenance and there are some maintenance and repairs, uh, we're gonna open up another for a small, uh, group of youth, uh, for what we call the, uh, YRTC in the Youth Residential Treatment Center. So we plan to have, um, you know, putting our referrals out. So in October, in the middle of October, I believe, the tenth is the date to start that, uh, smaller census. But it will require, um, the twenty-four seven care. Um, as they live in the facility, there's the kitchen that has to be staffed. We only have one cook there currently, but we're pulling together all our resources to make this work. And again, working with DPM on what we can do to look at those assessments that weren't being qualified, um, even for the cook position. And so, yes, we, um, when, when you look at that, there's usually three shifts that are, um, needed for the staff that are, you know, making sure that there is coverage for all of the, the all hours and there is coverage for all of the, the all hours and day times. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brenser. Committee members, any questions? Any thoughts? Dr. Brenser, you're being the clinical psychologist. For those counselors, practitioners that are not fully licensed. What kind of supervisory duties do you, I guess, help them with?
Uh, yes, sure. Thank you for the question. Oh, always unsure. Don't want to cut you off. Uh, yes, for the clinical supervision, I still start with that. For those that are more, I guess, in the western side licensed with their state. If it's New Mexico, Arizona, Colorado, or another licensure in that realm of like counseling or therapy. Yes, the clinical supervision needs to come from an independently licensed professional. And so like, let's take myself, for example, when I was more in the clinical director role at Shiprock. I would oversee a lot of those soon to be licensed individuals that have their master's degree. But they need a certain amount of clinical hours working with clients, different populations, child, youth, family. And then also with their documentation, their hours documented that they've, you know, had the clinical supervision. And that usually takes for most, even at the master's level, two years to help someone achieve that independent or start moving towards that independent licensure. And so that's where, you know, we need to continue to, you know, help bring aboard those that are already independently licensed, because right now we do have a handful of independently licensed clinical staff that, that are deemed certified by the state as a supervisor clinic for clinicians. And so that is a process that takes time. And for the practitioners, you know, they, they still participate in the clinical staffings, if you will. But because their licensure is coming from the traditional associations or the Native American, I guess, NEC certification boards they have, then they, you know, comply under that. Right now, we have one practitioner who's licensed with their traditional association and is also an entry level substance abuse counselor. So he's getting, I guess, both sides of that ability to work in both realms. And so it is a process, and that's what I've been working with our behavioral health directors. We currently have is on our clinical supervision model. Because Arizona Behavioral Health Board, you know, has, you know, certain qualifications as well as New Mexico. But really just seeing how can we work with both? And so we're meeting qualifications for both states. And that's also important for the billing, third-party reimbursement part. Because whoever is, you know, doing the clinical oversight and signing off on a person's clinician. Maybe he doesn't have their independent licensure yet. They have to kind of use their licensure, if you will, that they're overseeing this non-independent person work. And so therefore, we could still bill for those services. And so, you know, that's what I meant by earlier with streamlining things and making sure that our, our abilities and what we have set up within DBMHS helps us to grow and maximize what we do have right now. But the more staff we bring on that are not independently licensed, that is going to be a challenge. However, one area I've looked in that is to, we have a individual, an organization that we are wanting to contract with for this area of helping us with the clinical supervision and oversight. Because since we lack a lot of clinical supervisors, honestly. So when we hopefully get that contract through our procurement process and everything, then I think that'll, you know, assist us as well. But they're, you know, and an entity that's well-known in Arizona. But for some reason, the contract is still going back and forth of what we can agree and agree to. But they were responsive to our request for proposal. So that's kind of let you in a little bit more in-depth view of that process of how, you know, DBMHS, our organization, needs to really be strong and maintain that clinical oversight, clinical supervision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brenser. Going forward, Dr. Brenser. Could the committee be hopeful to bring the state of New Mexico, whether it be the Department of Public Health or the Human Services Department, to the table so that the aspect of credentialing could be the same for both states? Since, you know, we, that would be a thought. I guess I'm asking, what are your thoughts on it?
I mean, great question, you know, myself being licensed in other states before. Washington State where I was before coming back home here to Navajo. And, you know, each state does have their licensing requirements. And typically how they work is on the degree you have. So let's just say someone's moving into that substance use counseling realm and they have their AA associate's degree. They typically have more hours that they need to have in order to become that licensed substance use associate. So, and then versus vice, or on the other side of the coin, maybe at Arizona, they also have their associate degree for substance use. And yes, those hours aren't always the same. So that would be a good conversation to have. Typically, what we've done historically with DBMHS and just even currently is we look at the state with the higher qualification and will, you know, kind of use that as our guide to help those individuals that are wanting licensure. But it is really, like I said, a process either way, because even depending on the degree, degree you have from the AA, all the way even to your doctorate degree, you still have to meet those certain hours. So yes, we could ask the state to kind of look at that across the board. I mean, their licensing boards and see. But I think another area which would be interesting that to look at is Navajo kind of having its, its own credentialing board, if you will. And that's due to the fact is DBMHS has been working with the Community Health Aid Program, Technical Assessment Type Grant. And really that is to look at, you know, like, can Navajo sustain a behavioral health aid program? Which is again, working with individuals who aren't necessarily independently licensed within their states. And also community health aides. And there's the dental health aide, but we don't do dental. So I think the more, you know, we, we keep those relationships with the state active. I think it's helpful because then they have to dust off what, you know, it's not until you start asking these questions that they start trying to figure out the answers as well. So I think it would be interesting in our best interest, yes, to, to look at those different, you know, qualifications. But as in their response to changing or amending their rules, I, I'm just not sure. So yes, we'd have to have meetings as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brenser. Committee members, any questions? Okay, uh, in that case, then the chair would be open for a motion to accept the report from Division of Mental Health and Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services.
Motion, hello?
Uh, motion by Honorable Halona. Do I hear a second? Second by Honorable Edison Wanika. Uh, with this motion, committee members, the way that the Dr. Brenser described the residential center in Shiprock. Think it would really be hopeful for the committee to visit the site as well. Then to, and to help us envision residential programs in each of the agencies. That would be a thought, committee members. With the motioning parties, would that be acceptable?
Your chair, that's acceptable, Halona?
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Uh, Honorable Wanika concurs. With that, at the end of the meeting, we'll schedule that particular visit. Ms. Chi, roll call vote, please.
Chair, roll call vote for accepting the report with Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
Don't get Paul Begay to scream.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
I'll vote green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Paul, excuse me, Carl R. Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika, how do you vote? Edison J. Wanika votes green. Chair, you have five in favor, there are opposing, chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi. Uh, let's move on to the non, non-emergency medical transport. Well then, I think, Dr. Jill Jim will provide the report.
Um, thank you, Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and Hess Committee Members and those on the call. I am doing the report for the non-emergency medical transportation. We did send a written update of some of the items addressed today. So in my report, I'll go over those items that myself and one other staff oversee public complaints of NEMT. We respond to the NEMT companies when there is, when an individual, public individual submits a complaint. Sometimes we receive those by email and we do address it with the companies. But due to the lack of funding to manage the full enforcement fully. I know that the approved access companies providing transportation on the Navajo Nation have remained the same pre-COVID nineteen pandemic. So the current fiscal year twenty twenty-three proposed budget does include a manager for the NEMT program. So we look forward to their approval of the budget to hire a manager to begin overseeing the program full-time. Once the managed program manager is in place, NDOH will discuss the implementation challenges of the NEMT legislation. And the NDOH will develop and update a plan to strengthen staffing or and or assess the legislation flaws to ensure that NEMT law enforcement is feasible. So I know we've, I've been working on this for some time. I know the pandemic has impacted the implementation of collecting fees. So we have not collected fees at all in this administration. And even though we did collect fees, we didn't deposit them. So we do have a fund management plan that was passed pre-COVID. So we're going to have to revisit that once we get an individual hired to fully oversee their program in the new budget. So that would be my update and I'm open for questions, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Committee members. And I know that, you know, when we first convened, we did get a lot of questions from the operators themselves. However, it seems like those concerns have waned, meaning they're, uh, non-existent right now. So, um, committee members, what are your thoughts? Any questions?
I think we need that manager in there, Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Honorable Carl Slater Otto. Honorable Halona, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Chair and Committee Members. Dr. Joe, I just had a question on your medical transport. How many, how many are there now, total medical transport divisions are there? And is the New Mexico transport different than the Arizona State Transport, Transport? For hospital to, to locations, for patients to go to locations? That's a question I have right now, Dr. Joe.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Dr. Jim?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Halona for that question. Currently for, so each state is different. And I, I believe this is one of the conversations that we would have to have with the, either the Department of Health or Human Services for each state. And I know I began having those conversations sort of like exploring the relationship that we have with the states. So the reason why I believe the NEMT legislation was created in the previous council is only due to the fact that I think access had a large role in ensuring that tribes have a list of companies that they we agree to and sort of regulate in that manner. So the under access, we still have over seventy NEMT companies that haven't changed. And I believe there's a moratorium on adding new transportation companies at the Arizona level. And we don't have a say in that moratorium on how that, that affects new companies joining. So what we don't want is, we don't want a company to come on to the Navajo Nation and say, well, you approved this. And now that you approved this, Arizona access, can you now allow us to transport? So I think we're going to have to make sure there is clear clarification on what those are and, and the restrictions there are with the state and with the Navajo Nation. So those are, those companies still have, list has not changed. There are companies that are under access, but we're not on that list of seventy companies or so that want to support, provide services in the Navajo Nation and they submit it an application at the time when we were collecting new applications, I think, earlier, later part of twenty nineteen, right before the pandemic. So we do need to, we, we know that there are other companies that are interested. But I think we do need to look at the legislations and determine what is feasible for us. Because I think we do still see issues and we are still aware that some of these still exist like. And we also are not fairly compensated as we are still aware that some of these still exist, like, um, and we also are not fairly compensated as well. So I think those are , um, some things that we would have to still visit the White Mountain Apache, um, with on determine how we need to fix some of the legislation and that. So for that, for access, the only reason why is they made a requirement that, um, they directly have, um, tribe, that the tribes have a say on which companies can be, um, providing services on the nation. And because of their requirement, um, we have established that legislation to support it. If that didn't exist, I don't think we would have been in this situation. Um, and so it's sort of like an approval process that access requires. But as far as, um, um, some of the legislation issues, I think as far as enforcement and fees and all these things are probably something we're going to have to revisit. For the state of, um, Utah, um, we don't have hospitals also submitting their NEMT companies, because some of the six thirty hospitals also run their own NEMT services. So for Utah, I know that Utah Navajo Health System has a direct contract with the Utah Department of Health, which is different, has a different name now because Utah Department of Health and Utah Human Ser- Health, um, Department of Health and Human Services merged. So those, um, those particular, um, state agencies are now in one, um, in one. And I, I do recall that there is a contract um, with, um, the state directly to Utah Navajo Health System. So, and for the state of New Mexico, um, when we met, when I met with, um, Department of Human Services, um, Dr. Skrize, this is pre-pandemic. We were talking about, um, how to have them include, um, the Navajo Nation process. In regards to how that, in regards to having them to be aware that, that there has to be a sort of an approval process through the Navajo Nation. So the state of New Mexico doesn't require what access requires. And so that's, that's the, I guess that's the difference between the three states is that because of the requirement from access, the, this legislation exists. But for state of New Mexico, there is no requirement, um, to have, um, tribal approval on operating NEMT services. So um, we were willing to sit down and have the conversations of how that will work, um, for the new Mex- state of New Mexico site. I am aware that, um, that people are residing in Arizona and get referrals to Albuquerque. People are, um, Arizona companies are coming on to going into New Mexico to provide patient, um, transportation services as well. So um, I think there's still, um, needs to be sort of those conversations with the states of Utah and the states of New Mexico and figure out how to, um, make adjustments to the legislation for it to be more feasible and not cumbersome. When we collected the twenty nineteen applications, I mean, some companies were submitting like four to six two-inch finders to us. And some of them were redundant. And so I think those are things that I ought to just bring to your attention that we would need to have a work session when we start making those, um, changes. And I know there was a lot of uproar. When we, when we do the, um, application fees, there will be a lot of uproar again from the transportation companies. And they're just, um, and so that's the, that's the issue there is the reason why there was such, um, commotion at the beginning is that we were charging, um, for application fees. Now that we're in, haven't charged and collected or deposited any fees, that's why there's really some silence right now. Not until we begin those conversations, there'll probably be sort of, um, those efforts coming from the transportation companies again. So um, I hope we can resolve some of these, um, concerns and get the, um, program up and going when the new manager arrives. So um, that will be my response, um, Chair and Vice Chair and Honorable Halona. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Jim. Committee members? Any? Uh, Honorable Halona, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, uh, um, let Dr. Jim know that, uh, appreciate that information that comes in handy. If I had some questions, people asking me questions about, uh, uh, those medical transport vehicles. And so now I can see the difference between the states. Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Jill. I appreciate it. Uh, Chair, that'll be it for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Jim, on the New Mexico side, those non-medical emergency transport, they're basically approved through the Public Regulatory Commission? As I, as I recall, I guess I'm asking that for clarification.
Chair, um, I will have to get back with you. Yeah, each state's going to have a different, um, regulatory, um, compliance. So I will um, check on that and get back with you. I, I believe there are some companies on the seventy or so list that are approved in New Mexico, but not all of them. So it will be interesting going forward too, because I think managed care organizations may also be providing their own transportation services and they, that we're not aware of it either. So I think there will still be some ways to, um, figure that out. Look for that information and get back with you.
Ashila, thank you, Dr. Jim. Committee members, any further comment, discussion? Not, the chair is open for, um, it's not the chair's open for, um, motion to accept this particular report?
A motion?
Um, Honorable Edison Wanika beats everybody to make the motion. And, uh, I'll accept that and then accept Honorable Carl Slater's second to the motion. Any further comments, discussion? Yes, we, we really need, um, convene with our Arizona representatives to make the necessary changes that Dr. Jim referenced. But we'll leave that to another meeting. With the other committee members, if there's no other comments or discussion, should, uh, one, once, I mean, twice, three times. Ms. Chi, roll call vote, please.
Chair, roll call vote for accepting the report from Navajo Department of Health, non-emergency report. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., how do you vote?
I'll give Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote? Honorable Carl R. Slater, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika, how do you vote? Honorable Edison J. Wanika votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, how do you vote?
You're still on the call.
Chair, you have four in favor, zero opposed, and chair not voting.
Thank you, Ms. Chi. Committee, committee members, uh, I'm in a call for a recess of one hour. Got to go chase, uh, documents. We'll convene at one PM. That'll, that'll give Honorable Slater a chance to get lunch, Honorable Begay to get lunch. And then it'll give a chance to, for Honorable Halona to get back on the call. Thank you. I've got two legislations I've got to chase down and then of course, um, do other reports. Thank you. We are in recess until one PM.